I don't know.
If everybody's ready, time is 6:30, call the meeting to order. Members present, Mike Ahern, Acting Chairman, John Kruekenberg, Chairman, absent today, John Rinlett, Acting Vice Chairman, Bert Sudcliffe, Charlie Berman, Selectmen's Rep., Paul Wilson, Rhonda Bishop, Bob Dragon, Alternate, John Kelly, Alternate, and Darrell Brown, Selectmen's Alternate, in the audience. Staff President, Brian Murphy, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer. And we'll go to Item 3, Public Comments. Seeing none. Item 4, Consideration of May 20th Minutes. Page 1. 2. 3. 4. 5. 6. 7. 8, 9.
There's one on 8. Last bullet of the first section there, that John Kelly was relieved of his alternate position, was that returned to?
He was relieved, he was relieved, he left.
Oh, it is relieved then, I thought that no longer being a voting member, he would be returned to his alternate, but I guess he left for the day, so that is correct.
Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as is?
Aye.
Brian, do we have any significant correspondence?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Alright. And that brings us to Item 6, Old Business, A Site Plan Review for Continuance, It's a Discussion and Public Hearing. 345 Highland Street, approximately 5 acres. The proposal is to construct a 13,255 retail pharmacy with associated parking access and utility improvements, the application was submitted by GB New Hampshire, 2 LLC. I recuse myself, the last meeting when we talked about this, I will recuse myself again. Acting Chairman, John Rinlett, will run this portion.
Since John's not here, well, we need to pick on all kinds of...
Yes. John Kelly, you in, Bob Dragon also recused himself. John Kelly, you were sat in on that, so I'll have you sit on again.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have 7, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, we'll have 6.
Did the planning board, everybody got their packet and reviewed it? Okay. At this time, does CVS have anything that they would like to present at this time? Others? That they did not present at the last meeting, or that has come up since then?
Yes, it would, I'm Linda Call, the attorney for the project, my client Ralph Rollerson in Middleton. This is Dave Fenstermacher of DHB, Project Engineer, who's gonna probably have the site plan, so everybody can have it in mind again. We also have Meredith Graham, the Traffic Engineer from DHB here, as well as the Architect for the project, Bryce... Sorry, I wanted to call him Anderson too. And then with me is my Summer Associate, who's been providing me some help, we, at this time of year, are lucky to have law students available to help us, is behind the maps, Jeffrey Hirsch. So we've got the whole team here, again, we'll go back through all of the project. We had basically gotten through most of it, I think, the last hearing, and really, there was a motion made because of questions raised about whether there needed to be mitigation, because we are in the floodplain, and there was a question whether there should be one-to-one mitigation for all the fill that we have to bring into the site, and the fill is required by your zoning ordinance, by the floodplain. The credit union similarly put in fill, the plan is to bring fill in to basically be at the same grade as the credit union. One of the things that has been submitted since the last meeting, something that was requested, is the proposed easement agreement that we both basically agreed to as to form, obviously still subject to approvals here, but to allow us basically to have a pedestrian walkway between the sites, so any customers that want to go back and forth between the sites can do so on foot rather than going back out to Highland Street. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the site now, what Woodlands had to do in going first in building was to build a huge retaining wall, and the properties are at two very different levels. Without that easement agreement, we would basically have no other choice but to do a similar retaining wall on our property, which would basically leave this no man's land of two retaining walls facing each other, looking like some sort of medieval moat. And so we did not want to create that, and that's why we, you know, worked with our neighbor to get that easement agreement, and they, you know, have been very cooperative in doing that, which we think will be an improvement for both of our properties. But because of that fill, this board started to become concerned, because it was in the floodplain, there was some suggestion, well, in other projects across Tenny Mountain Highway, that there was a thinking that they had had to do a one-to-one ratio of taking fill out of the floodplain if they were putting fill back in. And there was a motion made basically to have your planner and staff do some investigation as to what had been done in the past. And that staff report really shows you the research that's been done, and really distinguishes the properties that have been approved on the other side of Tenny Mountain Highway. Points out that Tenny Mountain Highway in itself is somewhat of a damn situation in helping the floodplain on this side, but that those properties are in an environmentally sensitive zone, overlay district, as well as partly in the floodway, and your zoning ordinance requires in the floodway for there to be one-to-one mitigation. And that report also cited the special instances that were in those cases of, I think it was also relying on the size of the project and the environmentally sensitive district, and wetlands on the Home Depot site where there may have been more extensive mitigation that would have been required otherwise, but that they were very different projects than this side of Tenny Mountain Highway, where it was reported to the board that the Burger King property and the Woodlands Credit Union property were not required to do such mitigation. And our engineers also submitted a supplementary report to basically, you know, show you where the floodplain is, to basically say, they reviewed the report that was done for the Woodlands Credit Union when there was a suggestion that that fill might have an impact in a flood situation, in which there was the assessment that it wouldn't, and that same assessment they think would apply to our property. So, again, both factually and legally, I don't think there's any basis to do one-on-one mitigation on this property. Your planner did suggest if you, you know, wanted to look at this situation further in the future, for making some change to your zoning ordinance, you certainly could do so for, with a subcommittee to do that, but for this project, you ought to apply the existing rule and not require one-to-one mitigation, that there just factually and legally isn't a requirement for it at this point. So we would hope the board would solve that issue on that basis. In addition to that, if you recall, there was a report by your consulting engineer that we, I think, had just received the day of the hearing, very close to the hearing, our engineers have also done a submittal that basically itemizes how each of those issues are addressed, and I think, with the exception of the traffic and site plan fee issue, or site impact fee, I think the engineers are fine on the other points being addressed.
Say that exactly, from my standpoint.
I assume you are Mike? Nice to meet you, Linda Call. So I think we're through those issues. So I think where we are, as far as a new issue goes that I would like to address, is whether this project, whether this planning board needs to try to assess a site impact fee because of the traffic situation created by this project. And you got, I got to see a very strongly worded plea from your planner just this afternoon saying, please, you know, be fair, make sure that everybody that contributes to a future development need pays their fair share by paying a site impact fee. In principle, we have no dispute with that, you know, yes, everybody should pay their fair share, we want to pay our fair share. That email really didn't concentrate on this particular project and this particular intersection. And again, we want to pay our fair share, we just think in this case, and this intersection, which we're pleased is already approved. Remember, why this site is attractive to us is, it is well-traveled. Our traffic report reports that pharmacies like us get 50% of their business just by people driving by and deciding, oops, there's something I need at CVS. It amazes me that that's what the statistics are, but if you look in more urban environments, that's literally the rationale while, while you see even same brand stores as close as a mile and a half apart. It's just that study that they have consistently shown that people make those decisions to make the quick purchase, and remember that they need to get something that they need on that quick basis because they drove by. So we are here because it does get traffic. It is already a traffic, you know, a road that's very close to the state highway, it already has a traffic light, you know, that's why we're here, that's why it was a good site. And the traffic analysis that we first submitted, basically showed that, you know, the grade the intersection out at Tenny Mountain Highway and Highland Street, by the way, I've got the traffic engineer here who I'm told to pop up, and if I say anything wrong, she's supposed to correct me, because I am a lawyer, I try to understand these things, but I talk to her first and try to make sure I've understood it accurately, that I, you know, she's under firm instruction, don't let me put my foot in my mouth, I don't want to get anything wrong, so, Meredith, don't be shy. But you basically grade an intersection, like the school grades, from A to F, FB failing, and it's called LOS, Level of Service. What was initially submitted in the initial traffic report, you can see, really focuses on the intersection as a whole and its grade, and basically summarizing, and I think Meredith reported to you last time, you know, this is an easy one, there's one second change overall, you know, we basically just don't make any significant impact. So we didn't really think of us of having a traffic issue here, except there was the concern that our original traffic report was based on looking forward to 20, I have a hard time with these numbers, they seem so funny to me, 2021, that's only 11 years away, is looking and assuming that the LOES project would be built, and that's really to meet DOT standards, that that's on the plans, it's been approved, so we're supposed to take that into account. So we were asked by the board, and I think Mr. Bignelli suggested it, that you ought to also see what it would look like if that project never happens, and that's why we submitted a second supplement to that report. But basically, it shows the same thing, that even if you say LOES doesn't happen, LOES improvements don't happen, it's still basically an intersection that's still functioning in 202011, whether we build or whether we don't build, it's basically a C grade, which is perfectly acceptable, and we affect it in a minor way overall. And again, that's the bottom line grade for the intersection, this is like for your entire paper, you get one grade for the entire intersection, but what your consulting engineer has flagged for you appropriately, is really looking at the individual grades of each movement within that intersection, and is really flagging for you correctly the worst case of where CVS makes an impact on an individual movement. And that movement is basically the left-hand turn from Highland Street out onto Tenny Mountain Highway. And again, there's a light here, because it's only a three-legged intersection at this point, the traffic either just goes right, or it goes left, but there's only two lanes out there right now. So basically, what it shows in 2021, if the LOES project never goes forward, this stays a three-legged intersection, there is an additional four-second wait at this light to go left, and basically, a one and a half car lengths in the left turn lane waiting to make that left turn. The grade doesn't change. And that's, it does degrade where the overall intersection in 2021 is still a C, that individual left turn is degraded to a D movement. If you look at the initial report in 2011, which assumes when we get approvals, we can go forward to build, when the CVS project would come online, start affecting the traffic, there's that kind of impact, but it still stays at a C level of traffic on that turn, it doesn't degrade to a D level until you look at that 2021. And what the traffic analysis you've got before you, if you look at the detail of the attachments, is that that D grade exists whether CVS exists or not, which is the no-build scenario, is that for whatever reason, CVS property never gets developed, you know, this traffic intersection will just get more traffic because of other things that happen in the next 10 years. So in the next 10 years, if nothing happens on this site whatsoever to change, that individual movement still, it gets a D, which is passing, not the best grade as you learn in the school, but it's passing. Big cities have many more Ds, you know, than smaller towns do. But again, it's a passing grade, the overall intersection stays C, it's basically the same whether CVS 10 years out is there or not. If you look in the detail of the attachments that were attached to the original report, this leg turn in 2011, which assumes even in the initial report that LOES wouldn't be built at that time yet, that that would be a C grade in 2011, but even though it's judged to be a C grade at that time, the CVS impact is determined to be one second more, and almost two car lengths rather than a car and a half. And when I asked, why is that possible, it actually gets better 10 years later on that turn, in terms of what our impact is, is I got told that basically, the way a traffic engineer has to look at the project and do the grading, is by 10 years, you assume that some light adjustment has been made to take into account the heavier traffic that's coming from Highland Street. You don't assume any improvements to the intersection, but you do assume changes to the light that may be adjusted to make it work at the optimal level. So we really are a small impact. So, again, we'd be happy to pay our fair share, but we're really suggesting that in this situation where we really don't have any impact now to change the grade level of service, or even 10 years from now, that it would be a very hard job for this planning board to try to parse out what might be a fair, small contribution for us to make to that bucket. Because remember, under the authority for grant, I mean, for imposing site plan, excuse me, site impact fees, that the town has to use it within six years for the particular project for which it collects it. You have to keep it in escrow, if you don't use it for the project within that time, and again, you're going to be collecting from other people and the town itself to make that kind of improvement, then you've got to give it back. So the whole concept of a site impact fee is by necessity, under that regime, relatively short-sighted, you know, it doesn't allow you to go and say, oh, 20 years from now, we think that, you know, Tenny Mountain is going to need to be an interstate, and there's going to need to be all these different improvements made, you know, as in anything, the longer you look out, the more speculative it gets. So the legislature in its wisdom and granting authority to planning boards to impose impact fees, and towns to impose impact fees, has limited it to six years. And I'd suggest, you know, beyond that, the way we will contribute to all sorts of improvements that the town may make, is we'd like to become a taxpayer in town, you know, you get to pay, collect your taxes from all the existing taxpayers, and, you know, we will pay for part of those improvements. But it would be a real challenge to parse out, you know, which drops of the bucket are for this improvement, and you also sort of have to focus on what is that improvement? Because after all, you know, it's still a functioning intersection in 2021, overall C, this one turn at D, we are proposing that, I mean, we've got, we're within NHDOT jurisdiction here to get a driveway permit, if they think the impact that we're having on this turn is such that the light needs to be retimed, we're recognizing that may be something we need to pay for, and we've got a similar project with this same sort of impact in another town with a state highway where that's exactly what we're doing. So we have, you know, no problem with that, but trying to guess when traffic would be sufficient in this area to warrant basically, you know, the next physical improvement to improve that left-hand turn, other than taking the timing of the existing light, would basically to put in a second turn lane. And as I understand, the LOES improvements, that didn't do any second turn lane, that LOES would create a fourth leg to this intersection, and that fourth leg to the intersection would require a through-traffic lane coming from Highland Street to get over to that new leg of that new shopping center, but that wouldn't do anything to benefit us or that left-traffic turn. It would just create a need for three lanes here, where now there's only two turns that you can make, and really wouldn't leave any room for a second left-hand turn lane. So, you know, to try to speculate when that second left-turn lane might really be warranted by the traffic, you know, could be quite a job. You know, we're looking out to 2021 and not even seeing a failing grade for that particular turn. And again, and when you think about your experience with turns, you often take a little longer to make the left-hand turn at a light than if you, you know, go straight through or you make a right-hand turn. So, again, I think we're looking beyond potentially the frame of reference of a six-year improvement plan to make a judgment that, you know, this is on the drawing boards, this is something we know that is going to be needed at this intersection, we need to start looking at all the properties on Highland Street that would potentially contribute to the need for that. Again, remember, it has to be a rational nexus, you have to look not just at what new development will do that will go in in Highland Street, but also the fact that you've got a nice growing town with a growing university, and that this is your connector street from downtown to Tenny Mountain Highway. So this road, I would assume, will get more traffic just because of the success of Plymouth to continue to grow and be a desirable place to live, and people want to get from downtown out to the highway. So any kind of calculation of what our fair share would be, we'd need to take into account that totally unrelated growth, and that's what, as I understand it, Meredith's numbers projecting out to 2021 does, of projecting, you know, what kind of growth is expected, taking into account all those sorts of variables, and she's judging that left-hand turn as still being a passing D. Not the best grade, but passing. Now, a lot of people will graduate from high school, isn't it tonight? With, you know, passing grade, and again, and I assume, am I right on that, Meredith, that why you could have a D on one movement and still be a C overall, because that a left-hand turn is sometimes the slower movement?
The overall grade is the average of all movements. That means if one's a D, and one's going to be better than D, it's an average exit rate.
So it is sort of like taking an exam, where you get the bottom grade...
Have a curve.
That's right, but you get, you know, you get Xs, and, you know, you don't get quite as much on one essay answer as you do on the other, but if it balances out, the overall intersection is, you know, and tearing up an intersection like this to make an improvement that, you know, brings your grade up slightly is something that, you know, is a big expense and a big headache, and those are the sorts of things towns and states have to go through all the time in terms of balancing out when we do the improvements, in addition to when the money is. So, so I guess the bottom line is, I really would like you to focus first and foremost on the practicalities and the factual basis of this case, not on impact fees generally, because, you know, like you say, I think your ordinance, as I said out in my letter, is really more designed to fit the requirements for an individual exaction, because nobody that I can see has done the study and the work for you to give you a methodology of how do you try to look at the bigger picture and determine how, you know, much per square foot or some other formula that you should apply all up and down the street to collect money for this futuristic improvement, and also, it's got to be tied to a capital improvement plan, where that's been in the plan as this is something that's needed, and what date it's needed, and this is the methodology of where we, it's fair to collect from this of where we, it's fair to collect from this group of people who will impact that. Normally, that's what you see in an impact ordinance. And I've attached a case for you, just for your background reading, that, again, the Supreme Court has found that the legislature in authorizing impact fee ordinances didn't mean to burden the planning board with doing all that work legislatively to decide on a case-by-case basis that big-picture impact fee. What the legislature has since gone back and done is said, but wait a minute, we never intended to take away from the planning board the power that was there before the impact fee ordinance authority was there to look at each project and say, boy, if your project is triggering a need for this new particular improvement, you've got to pay your fair share of that before we can approve your project. And you've still got that power. Your ordinance sort of really ties into that power more than the other option of a site plan fee ordinance that tries to take a broader view and gives you a methodology for trying to parse out in a broader way the impact over an area that might influence a particular need for a public improvement. You know, I don't see where anybody's done that work for you. And so, but again, those are all legal issues. I'd really like you first and foremost to concentrate on the practical issue of, yes, you're charged by the zoning ordinance to fix impact fees in appropriate circumstances. And first and foremost, we're trying to point out to you, this isn't one of those circumstances. You know, we selected this site because it's already improved. It's got a traffic light. You can get in and out of here. You know, it's a C grade now. It'll be a C grade overall, you know, after we build and then 10 years, whether we build or we don't build. And like I say, that one part of the grade does degrade to a D over 10 years, but it degrades whether we're there or not. And that's why we're really saying, no, this isn't a case where you need to labor long over what an impact fee should be. But again, we don't disagree with Mr. McNelly. He did point out accurately to you the worst degradation that the report shows. We wholly agree with that. And, you know, and he's really quoting your ordinance to you, saying, this ordinance puts on you, planning board, the burden of trying to determine whether a site plan, I mean, a site impact fee is appropriate in this case.
Anybody have any questions for CVS? Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Could we hear from the town engineer, Mike?
Sure. Yes. Sorry, I'll stay sitting down.
That's fine.
When we look at intersections and everything that the adjutant said, as an engineering officer, pretty accurate. Level of services is a sort of a broad measure of how an intersection operates, either overall intersection or in a single approach. A more specific look at that is the queue length, which is number of cars that back up, or the delay at each approach. That's a few of the precise indications. You may have an increase in delay still within a broader level of service on our approach, which is what you have here. Does that make sense to you? So in this, the overall grade, it's a level of service A. It's in the future, it's level of service D, which is still a function of the intersection not there. I guess the background information, the background book was shown in there. That was included. As far as what my concern is and why I point that out to you is, I guess, you know, there's no, at this point, there's no real guarantee that Lowe's will already develop or may develop. Development is what they want to do. There's nothing, there's a plan, there's nothing in place that would ensure that. That's why I want to take a look at the sort of interim condition here of what it is now, assuming that that's not there. So if you have a, you know, CVS come in and they have an incremental impact of the intersection, you have, Lowe's doesn't get developed. You have four or five other sites across the street, similar to CVS, that gets developed as well. They all have incremental, that impacts the intersection as well. Next thing you know, you have an intersection that doesn't operate so well anymore. It is a state signal that that is true on state highway. I doubt the state will come and step up and say, you know, the intersection doesn't work that great, we're going to throw some money at you. So there'll probably be some financial obligation from the town to at least partner with the state in improving the state sometime in the future, which is whether that's a legal way to apply impact fee fees or not. I acknowledge it, to be honest with you. But the concern that I have is that if you have, I guess, sort of this incremental, potential for incremental impact to the intersection. This is not a gigantic impact to the intersection, that is true. Whether it's significant or not, it's not up to me. That's clear up to you guys, regarding that. But there is an impact to it. It has nothing to do with mitigating timing. I think timing, retiming the intersection as the intersection sort of matures and traffic lines, I think you do that anyway. So it doesn't really add any capacity to the intersection. It doesn't make it operate better. But if you get to a point where you have a capacity issue in the future, it doesn't really solve the problem. So whether it's possible to, you know, to, at this point, to identify a project and then put some sort of appropriation of a portion, I guess, of that product to CVS might be responsible for, I think it's possible to. I agree, it won't be easy to do and it certainly won't be easy to come to terms with everybody as far as what that should be, whether it's a double left turn lane or additional lanes on Tenny Mountain Highway. I don't know. I guess one thing I will point out as far as the Lowe's plan and whether they have a, you know, double left turn lane or no double left turn lane. I don't believe they did, but from what I saw from the plans that I saw. But what they did do is they had double through lanes on Tenny Mountain Highway, which allows a lot more of the time to be allocated to that side street. So the intersection operates at a much better pace. They may not need a double left turn lane, where in this case, we have a single end each direction on Tenny Mountain Highway. You may need more time for the side street to get through. So I guess, I guess the basis for my comment was, you know, for me, fortunately, I'm not a decision maker, you guys are, was to just sort of point out that there is an impact here. I guess I'm concerned that if Lowe's doesn't happen, that sometime in the future, if several projects across the street do, then some sort of way to fund some improvement there. This is the state probably a hundred percent for. Then the town being pulled in the bag with the signal doesn't work that well with a lot of developments that are coming along. So that's kind of what, that was my thoughts on the traffic and why I made the comment that I did. And unfortunately, I have to sort of throw it back and go out to make a decision on whether that's a significant enough impact to want an impact or not.
But you have had conversations with the town planner in reference to this, and I think we've got your...
Yeah, I think, well, I did see the email that Brian sent out this afternoon, too, which was pretty clear on what her opinion is on it.
Yeah.
And so the legal issues, I can't possibly speak to those. I just, I guess what I, just what I'm afraid to see is, you know, development occurring to the point where all of a sudden the town is sort of pulled in the bag here with the intersection that's not operating well and no way, no funding mechanism to take care of it. But that's something I want you guys to be considered.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. At this time, this is a public hearing. I will be opening it up for public comment, but I would like to hear, our town planner has been talking with Bill Hu, and at this point, I'd like Bill to kind of recap. I know we've got a letter and I've talked to Miriam on some of your conversations, but if you could just share a little bit with us on the history and your thoughts.
Please bear with me. I'm overcoming the coal that I contracted here and I'll try and be as clear as I can in speaking to you.
Okay.
There's really two issues here, one of which I was asked to comment on with regard to mitigation action as affects the flood plain that this proposal is going to be built out with them. And the other is a discussion that I'm hearing here as it relates to impact fees and, which I also talked to Miriam some about in terms of its appropriateness or not. Let me address this latter issue first, since that's what you've been hearing for the last 30 minutes. I, in looking at this project, would have concerns about the intersection as well, but it wouldn't stop there. We do have a capital project in place, ongoing. It's in its 10th year. It's called the Highland Street Improvement Project. We've done several sections of improvements to that roadway and it's yet to be completed. There's one more major section that needs to be constructed. This project that's being proposed is certainly going to affect Highland Street traffic. It's going to attract more traffic to the west or towards Kenny Mountain Highway than would be the case if they didn't exist at that location. So they're going to have a traffic impact on Highland Street from the village all the way out to Tenny Mountain Highway, as that is the major collector artery in this town. It has the highest traffic volumes of any artery in this town, except for Tenny Mountain Highway and Route 3. The traffic counts that we've made on this roadway range anywhere from 5,000 to as many as 8,000 vehicles per day, depending upon whether the school is in session or not, with projections of that exceeding 10,000 per day by the 2015 time period, where this Highland Street Improvement Project was hopefully going to be completed by. Now, to put it in historical perspective, when the Walmart project was before the town, the planning board required an impact fee from Walmart for the traffic that would be attracted over Highland Street to Tenny Mountain Highway down to their store. It was obviously going to bring a lot of their customer base through that artery. That would be the case with CVS. A large percentage, and I would say a majority of the traffic going to CVS will travel over Highland Street. And in that sense, they have an impact on Highland Street beyond the intersection issue that you've been discussing. Excuse me. The town is collecting money through registration tax on vehicles registered in this town to help build the reserve needed to complete the work that's yet to be done on Highland Street, along with taxpayer money and any development in and around Highland Street that has a potential impact on that traffic volume, which this facility, CVS, is proposing to build, will have, and thus, justifiably, could be asked to make a contribution to not only the light, if it has to be somehow reconfigured in its geometry, but to the Highland Street Improvement itself. So as far as the impact fee notion in its broader context, it's legitimate and it is targeted to specific work on a specific artery that happens to include this intersection, but is more than that in that it's a major collector road between Tenny Mountain Highway and the village that bears most of the traffic volume in this community. So if it isn't used for that purpose on Highland Street and/or intersection improvements in that six-year period, as has been stated by their representing lawyer, that money after six years would be returned to CVS, along with any interest earned on that money in the interim period. The second issue as it relates to mitigation of the fill that will be put in to meet the FEMA requirements to be afoot elevated beyond the 100-year flood elevation. I'm going to break out a little map here, and I see what you kept sitting behind me. And you recall this as well, I'm sure. This little flat triangle of land on the south side of Tenny Mountain Highway between Hatch Plaza and Harris Furniture has sort of been a problematical piece of land for the planning board to deal with for more than a decade. Back in the early 2000s, when several proposals were being brought forward for development in that little zone, that area was much discussed. There were some proposals that never reached the stage of being brought to a formal application that were decided to be withdrawn because of the conditions that they had to deal with. Burger King came along with a proposal that was by far the most serious proposal that we had received in a little sliver triangle that's just across the street from where the CVS proposal is going to be built out. That project, we felt, was on the south side of the dam, so to speak, that Tenny Mountain Highway, when it was reconstructed, created relative to the flood plain and the floodway. The only way that area floods out is through a culvert that's about five feet, right adjacent to where the little cleanup water and sewer pump house is located. So it's an overflow area and represents in its totality a relatively small area. Long and the short of it without going on here at length, the planning board ultimately decided that the Burger King project that was proposed would not introduce a sufficient volume of fill to warrant mitigation. I don't remember the exact numbers. I'd have to go back into the records of the site plan that's on record here in the town. But I suspect that in aggregate, their total fill volumes were on the order of 10,000 cubic yards, maybe less, maybe as little as 7,500 cubic yards. The planning board, in discussing that impact, concluded, and not, I won't say unanimously, there was a difference of opinion on that, but they concluded as a board that that volume did not have sufficient impact on the major flood plain, floodway area that it warranted mitigation. Along later came the Woodland Credit Union, Woodland Credit Union, a similar type project in terms of its scope and in terms of the impact of the fill that would be required to accommodate that proposal at the same elevation that Burger King is at. Again, if you look at the cubic yardage that was used to build out that facility, it was, again, I would estimate in the range of about 6,000 to 8,000 cubic yards. We, as a board, generally felt that the scope of projects that would be possibly brought before us in that general area on the south side of highway would not be of scale that would warrant mitigation at the time that we considered those projects that I mentioned. Along from Home Depot, Home Depot was another very large-scale development, far beyond anything considered on that side of the roadway prior to their application coming before our board. It impacted not only the flood plain, but... It impacted not only the flood plain, but a wetland pond area that was a critical consideration as it related to whether the project would even be entertained in the first place. The end result was that the Home Depot proposal progressed to the point where certain conditions had been agreed upon between the planning board and the applicant, where they were going to have to mitigate the fill that they brought in in conjunction with their project. In that case, it was on the order of about 70,000 to 75,000 cubic yards of material. The other aspect of that, the wetlands, had to be mitigated off-site on a 20 to 1 multiplier ratio, I believe it was, and there was an arrangement that was worked out for that. So looking at the CBS proposal, and I did ask for a copy of their site plan to look at in relation to these other projects, I would estimate that that project, as is exhibited on the documents that you have, is probably in the range of 16,000 to 18,000 cubic yards to build out the structure as they propose to build it out.
Yeah, just a, yeah, we, we had 19,000 in our estimation.
So I'm easily close. I would, in my own mind, see that as being sort of on the cusp of whether you want to mitigate or not. Personally, I would not see the need for mitigation for that volume being on the south side, but I can tell you that there are probably others in this room that would argue to the contractor. So that's a judgment that you people have to make as to whether you think that's necessary or not. I think it's less than a proverbial drop in the bucket as it affects the flood plain being on the wrong side of the dam, and that's where I stand on that issue.
Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate your input. I did omit the town planners represented to say a few words if they needed to in reference to your findings, knowing a lot of cases Miriam would state where she feels and what recommendation she felt.
She had expressed to me that she felt that, she quoted many of the things Mr. Will said about the dam, and that appears in the planners report. The fact that it's a different proposal than the Home Depot proposal factors in as well. After going around and she initially contacted you, did she not know to find out about this? Came pretty much to the same conclusion that mitigation on that side, especially the, you know, lesser in scope, I won't say small, wouldn't require it at this point, though she did think that it would be a good idea to take that into consideration in ongoing developments, because once again, we have, like the traffic study, incremental additions to that area. But she figured that, or expressed to me that she didn't think that the project required the one-to-one mitigation.
All right, thank you very much.
John?
Yes.
Just one further clarification. At the time that the board made its decisions on these earlier projects, it was without equivocation that on the north side of Tenney Mountain Highway, any project development in that flood plain or floodway area would require one-to-one mitigation. And that's the requirement that in fact was laid upon the Lowe's project when that was before the board.
Okay. Again, thank you very much, Bill. At this point, I want to open this for public hearing at 7:23. Do I have anyone that would like to make comments in favor of this situation? State your name.
Frank Miller. I'm in favor of this development, and my feeling on the fill-in and terrain change to get this project underway would enhance the final piece of this property that's on the south side of Tenney Mountain Highway. We've had Laconia Electric and the Credit Union make adjustments to their property, and this last piece of property, had this been a project to actually redefine the volumetric efficiency of the flood plain and any velocity index change for flood movements or water movements, this would have been done totally to properly reshape that land to not only perform as a usable piece of property, but I believe also aesthetically would make it look like it was a compatible companion project. What we have is you go out and look, you individually have applicants coming in, and the board says, we'll do just this, and then the next one comes in and says, we'll do this. And when you get it all together, it looks like it was done by committee. We need to look at conformal design of the terrain and environmental elements to it. And I think that with this final adjustments to the terrain to be compatible with the requirements of flood levels, building levels, they would make not only that area perform correctly for their flowage of water from their backside where the pond is, but also we would make that area look, it would look nice. It would have a nice appearance to it. And this would be the final piece that would finish this area build-out. I mean, there's not going to be any more between there and Harris Brothers. You know, it's pretty much, this is the last final piece. So I feel that the mitigation issue, being that the size of the project is a nominal size, doesn't deserve the mitigation either. And I think what they'd be doing would be a service to the community to aid in the design and look like it's a commercial area, which is what that is, and still be environmentally responsible to maintain any effect that they would have on drainage and any massive flood systems. So I stand in support of the project and would like to see the board approve it.
Do we have anyone that would like to speak against the project? Do we have anyone that would like to have some type of general comment on the project?
I wasn't at the last hearing, so maybe this has already been answered, but I'm concerned, not necessarily about the big intersection onto Tenney Mountain Highway, but the fact that this is, this is going to be another, people who are coming from the village who want to go out to this establishment, it's going to be another left-hand turn off of Highland Street just prior to that intersection. And I was wondering if that was part of the traffic study in terms of what the impact of another left-hand turn in terms of backing up the traffic on Highland Street, because at this point, you know, we've got a slew of left-handed turns going into the various establishments along that section of the Highland Street, and this is going to be the last one before the, before the big intersection. And I'm just wondering what the impact of another left-hand turn, and likewise, coming out of there, making a left-hand turn, how is that going to impact it? I don't know. I'm just wondering if there was information about that.
Okay.
Can I speak to that?
Let me, let me, someone else have a general comment? Bill?
I'd like to inquire as to what the applicant has used in lieu of vehicle counts on Highland Street in their study that they've done.
All right. Mike, could you address that or?
I'd rather chat.
Okay.
The counts, we did a count in April. We did a count at the intersection of Tenney Mountain Highway, Tenney Mountain Highway and Highland Street, as well as a count at the existing driveway on our sites and a count at the driveway to the Woodlands Credit Union. So we did a traffic, in our traffic study, we analyzed those three intersections. So we analyzed the signaled intersection as well as the two driveways.
And what were the results?
In terms of getting, once CBS is in, in terms of getting left turns out of the site, the maximum number of cars we showed would be two cars waiting, which is in line with all the other uncivilized intersections along Highland Street. And similarly, there's never more than one car waiting to get in and turn onto the site.
Okay, Bill.
Follow-up question. Did you use any of the town's traffic count information that has been accumulated on Highland Street itself, which covers more than a single point measurement of traffic volume? They've got multiple times that they've taken traffic counts on that roadway and can reflect the variability of its volume as a function of time of year, time of day, et cetera.
How we did that is we seasonally adjusted the existing traffic. So we looked at how traffic works in general and limits and how it seasonally fluctuates, and we applied that factor to our traffic counts to make our traffic study present a worst-case condition. So it's, we took the existing traffic count, we seasonally adjusted it upward to be a worse condition, a peak condition, and additionally, we added background voices to future projections to try and cover those variations.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have any data on daily volume.
We only looked at peak hours. We didn't look at daily overall traffic on Highland Street.
Okay. Mike McGinley, you raised your hand with Widge, and then I didn't see you raise it a second time, so I do apologize, but I missed you.
No problem. Thank you very much, Mike McGinley, owner of property across the street. And I do simply feel compelled to make the statement that one would think as a result of the recent Supreme Court decisions that there has been increased amount of interest in property across the street. And in fairness to the applicant and to the board, within the past seven days, I've met with two groups that are sincerely interested in advancing development across the street. So I think when we start thinking or talking about the years 2021, I don't think that property's going to be vacant in 2021. So I would just ask that the board keep that into consideration. I'm not opposed to the CBS as an entity. I do believe, though, that that is a, is going to be a very heavily traveled intersection in the future. I've had a local site contractor look at it. We've looked at the plans, the number, and it was very, very much a, you know, a rough number. It was probably going to be anywhere between $400,000 and $500,000 to properly redesign that intersection. That, of course, is not a hard number per se, but that was a number that was given from an indicated site contractor. Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment? Okay.
Paul Dragon, I'm the owner of the property for this meeting's about. I just wanted to get back to Widge's question. Good to see you here, Widge. Haven't seen you for a long time. I was a little confused on that left-hand turn. Is that the one you're concerned with before the major ivory onto Tenney Mountain? Are you considering that a driveway or a main ivory? Because it would be a driveway into the business. Is that?
Right.
So you're concerned with the driveway going into the business?
People are going to have to stop and wait for the oncoming traffic to turn left, and I'm just wondering how far people are going to have to back up, you know, between all the left-hand turns.
All right. I just wanted to distinguish between a major ivory versus a driveway. And my other question, if I had for this gentleman, Mr. McGinley, do we have a target date of when Lowe's is going to break ground? Could you tell us anything about that?
No, I don't have any information on that at this time.
Right.
Okay. Do we have any other comments from the audience? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 7:34. Miriam left, had sent us all the instructions, the town's position. There were four items that Miriam suggested that we discuss, that we look at, and that we approve or vote on. Number one was a motion to approve the submitted site plan proposal with the condition that the site plan submitted meets with the approval of the contracted town engineer and that the town engineer provide construction oversight. Number two was a motion to impose impact fees on this project for off-site traffic mitigation improvement, i.e. traffic lights, per zoning ordinance, Article 10s, and it is Section F, impact fees. The amount of the impact fee will be recommended by the town engineer in consultation with the applicant and based on impact the CBS traffic would have on a traffic improvement. This amount will be approved by the planning board, and a traffic improvement escrow shall be established for the Tenney Mountain Highway/Highland Street intersection per Article 8, impact fees in the Plymouth Site Plan Review Regulation. Item number three, a motion that the compensatory one-to-one flood mitigation requirement will follow current local, state, and federal guidelines. These current requirements do not require CBS to perform one-to-one or compensatory flood mitigation because CBS is not proposing to build in the floodway. Note, if the planning board would like to study this matter further in order to create stricter local requirements for future development, then a subcommittee should be formed to study this matter. The subcommittee can make a recommendation to the planning board, and the planning board can then decide if they would like to prepare a warrant article for town meeting proposing to amend the flood plain development ordinance located in the town zoning ordinance. And item number four, which was not on our mail-out, but it was given to us at the time, just before the meeting, number four was to have CBS sign a development agreement that outlines these conditions prior to receiving a building permit. So I will open this for discussion among the board on item number one. How does the board feel? Do we have any comments, any thoughts?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. It seems to me that that's a bit out of order, that approving the submitted site plan without having moved on item number three seems like it's out of place.
Okay. Well, I'll take your recommendation that we'll make number three number one, and we'll make number one number three. Does that be satisfactory? So moved. Okay. Item number one has been changed to a motion that the compensatory one-to-one flood mitigation requirement will follow current local, state, and federal guidelines. These current requirements do not require CBS to perform one-to-one or compensatory flood mitigation because CBS is not proposing to build in the floodway. flood mitigation because CVS is not proposing to build in the floodway. Do we have discussion? Do we have a discussion?
I feel that probably we should weigh our decision in regards to current working engineers, both for CVS and also the town. We really don't know what the qualifications for other engineers are, and we have to take a clue from people that are experienced in doing this type of work and also through their education and experience. So we can get a whole line of engineers from here to Manchester, and you probably have an awful lot of various opinions. But we hire these people for a purpose, and we also have the applicant's qualified engineer all say, and in fact, Mr. Hul said you didn't need mitigation. So I would assume that unless there's a personal reason for not allowing this operation to go forward, that my thing would be that we should vote on having it approved and not listen to every engineer down the line.
Does anybody else?
Yeah, I think that we've talked about two other developments in that area, Burger King and the credit union that did not require mitigation. And as Mr. Hul has said, each of those was probably under 10,000 cubic yards of fill in the floodplain. But we also talked about the other development, the proposed development that didn't go forward for Home Depot, and that one was on the south side of Tenny Mountain Highway, and it was required that that one would be mitigated, even though it's behind the dam, even though it's not in the floodway. It was required to be mitigated because of its size, which I'll accept Bill's estimate that that was in the range, I think he said of 70,000 or 75,000 cubic yards. This development is in the vicinity of 20,000 cubic yards. So it seems to me that it's an issue that's worth the discussion of the planning board, and it's not a simple matter that because it's not in the floodway that it has to be allowed. There is a cumulative effect of filling in the floodplain, and the cumulative effect is always felt downstream and is felt by the neighbors.
May I respond a little bit?
Will, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Home Depot is further up the road. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make one comment on Home Depot. They were going to be filling in on wetlands, so they had, as Bill noted, they had a 20-to-1 ratio that they had to.
Right. And I understand that. There have been a lot of terms that have been used tonight. We've talked about the floodway, talked about the floodplain, we've talked about the environmentally sensitive zone, and we've talked about wetlands. And we've, in some of the memoranda that we've read, those issues have all been conflated. So this is a simple issue of the floodplain. So there were really two issues when it came to Home Depot. One of them was the wetland, but the other was the fill-in of the floodplain.
Mr. Kelly?
A couple of things with Home Depot. Home Depot was going to cut into the banking in back of their property. And once you cut into the banking, per the army engineer, corps engineer indicated there was a tremendous amount of water. In fact, there's an old spring that supplied water for all of the farms up in that area before Plymouth put water there. Once you cut into that bank, they were afraid that there'd be a tremendous amount of water being flowed, additional water flowed into it. Besides that, the Home Depot is further up the road, and it's almost flat with the road, where this is, the elevation is down quite a bit, and it creates more of a dam than what that did there. And then the other thing is, it's like all rumors, we start out with 13,000 square cubic feet of earth, and then it's 15,000 cubic feet, and now it's 16,000, and now we got up to 20,000. By the end of the night, we probably have at least 35,000 cubic feet of land being having to fill in there. So let's stay on one figure, and that one figure is a non-defined figure because nobody has ever really calculated exactly what it is. It's all guesswork, so we have to go.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yeah. Maybe you've got exact figures, but let's stay with one figure.
Okay. I would say this, John. Bill did a calculation, and he came out very close to the figure that CVS had.
I thought he came out with 16,000, he came out with 19,000.
He said 16,000, 18,000, not a good estimate.
That was a good estimate.
That was a good estimate. I actually did our calculations and added.
So I mean, I think we, I think we have, you know, we kind of have a confirmation there.
Could we get him to state clearly what his calculated?
19,000.
19,000 cubic feet.
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards, yes, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion on the board? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve this site application.
Again, again, we're talking here, item number one is the mitigation.
Item number one, then.
Beg your pardon?
I make a motion we accept the item number one on this application or whatever.
We don't require mitigation. But I second.
Do we have a second?
He can second it. I just have a question.
Okay.
Would this be the time to request a subcommittee be put together for future purposes so that we can put that into our zoning ordinance that we have a right to if we feel it's necessary if there's more building to be done on that side?
My thought was, and it will be up to the board, but my thought was that under other business, we could, we could go ahead and talk about the subcommittee, and I think that's something that we need to do. And we, you know, in looking at that and thinking about it, we need people, we would have people from the current planning board, but we would have people from other planning boards and other people that had the expertise, you know, to put this together and then at some point present it to the planning board, their recommendations. Okay. Having a motion and a second, we'll vote on the motion that the compensatory one-to-one flood mitigation requirement, current local, state, and federal guidelines. These current requirements do not require CVS to perform one-to-one or compensatory flood mitigation because CVS is not proposing to build in the floodway. How do we vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? We have one. It's five to one, so the motion passes. There will be no one-to-one mitigation. Item number two is a motion to impose impact fees on this project for off-site traffic mitigation improvements. The amount of the impact fee will be recommended by the town engineer in consultation with the applicant and based on the impact the CVS traffic would have on traffic improvement. Do we have any discussion or any questions on behalf of the board?
I, yeah. My concern is how, I don't know how to ask this question. For instance, CVS may have, just say, 50 cars a day. Now whoever builds one or two projects across on the southern side has 250. So how do you pro-rate? I don't think that they should pay a 50-50 split. You know what I mean? So I didn't know if the engineer can clarify that. Yeah. I guess that's my question.
Mike, would you like?
I think what, and unfortunately, CVS will disagree, though. If we're going to look at an improvement that will mitigate an increase in, I guess, delay and queues, and it has to be some physical improvement in the intersection, so whatever that is, it would be probably the minimum amount of physical improvement you could make and still not have an increase in the delay or the queues. That would probably be, what that would probably do is it would probably, whatever improvement you make, because in fact, they're relatively small, it would more of overcompensate for what their impact is. So if we, if it was to add a left turn lane or add through lane, or whatever the case may be, it would take the level of service from where it is and make it much better than what it is now. So then you have, I guess, to wrestle with, you have so much traffic volume there now, you have so much traffic volume that CVS is adding, so you really have to look at this as, you know, the town is getting, the town and the end of the drive-through road, Highland Street is getting some benefit here, and CVS is getting some benefit because it's mitigating what, I guess, we determined is, or thought to determine is a significant impact. So I think the trick is to define a project as minimal project as possible, while still making physical improvement at the intersection, it would improve the social level of service, but reduce the delay and reduce the queues. And then so try to appropriate a portion of that to the 35 cars that are coming from CVS going into.
If I could be allowed to speak as well?
All right. Just one more. Mike, I was talking to Miriam today, and she said that there was some book that you use for measuring traffic in incremental. Are you aware?
Well, he's a bunch, you know, it's a bunch of books, so.
Well.
She may be talking about the generation manual or whatever.
Is that what it was, Brian?
So, and CVS, CVS Traffic, they've already done all that work, so we know what the, and it was done appropriately and accurately. So we know what the traffic impact is associated with, you know, what the volume of traffic is that's going to the intersection right now because they have a confidence. So there's some basis to make some sort of comparison between the traffic is using it and the traffic going to be increased to the other side.
Yes, ma'am.
But my concern is, is...